2019 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the Secretary please take role?
Mr. Gattins?
Here.
Mr. Marx?
Here.
Mr. Paul Metessa?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Is there any remarks? Jack, the testament and verifications of postings, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton, do solemnly swear that the property listed for tonight's meeting were posted on April 2nd, 2019. The following addresses are 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway, 1002 Wheeler Avenue, 900 Beach Street, 1325 North Washington Avenue, 1413-1415 North Sumner Avenue, and 1010 Electric Street. Again, all properties were posted on or about April 2nd, 2019.
Thank you. May I please call the first case?
First case is Forever Sammy Treatment Facility, 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway.
Good evening, folks. How are you?
Good.
My name is Shane Scanlon. I represent the property owner, Diamond 307 LLC. I am here tonight-
Mr. Scanlon, could you pull that microphone closer for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Folks, we're here tonight seeking zoning approval to utilize a property at 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway for a substance abuse rehabilitation facility. I'm here on behalf of the owners of Diamond 307 LLC. This property is a former Geisinger Medical Clinic that housed up to thirty physicians and a pharmacy. The property is approximately four acres. Structure was built in 1969. It is twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-one square foot building, and there is off-street parking for approximately a hundred cars. The facility plans to be a thirty-bed, PHP-level-of-care treatment facility. The facility's goal is to provide treatment to those suffering from substance abuse disorder. Treatment provided will follow evidence-based practices such as cognitive behavior therapy, twelve-step facilitation, individual, group, and family therapy using qualified therapists, and would include vocational and life-training skills. The facility anticipates a continuing caseload of thirty patients, including PHP and outpatient. The facility would need to be and would comply with all licensing requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Health. This is not a detox facility. This is not a methadone or suboxone clinic. This facility will not issue or dispense prescribed medication for substance abuse. The property abuts three residential properties; the majority of the property abuts Lake Scranton; a portion rests on the Scranton-Pocono Highway. For those who aren't familiar, I am a former district attorney. Prior to my term as district attorney here in Lackawanna County, I ran the county's drug task force. We have, in the past ten to fifteen years, seen an explosion in an opioid epidemic. We've seen many of our citizens succumb to death as a result of substance abuse. I believe last year's numbers are somewhere near one hundred fatal overdoses in our community. And what our community and the City of Scranton really lacks is a treatment facility. It is our sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, family, and friends that we are losing to the disease of addiction. And we need something in our community to be done, and we have people willing to step forward and provide that service in a facility that appears to be really appropriate, accommodating, and in a perfect location. With that, we do have some witnesses to present. At this time, I would call Richard Conneboy.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name and address?
My name is Richard Conneboy, Jr. My address is 1026 Green Holly Road, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Before the testimony starts, I'm Richard Bishop. I'm a neighbor of the facility that's been issued here.
If you can just get ahold of a microphone-
Thank you, Shane. Mr. Chairman, I'm Richard Bishop. I'm here as I'm a lawyer, but I'm also a neighbor. I live at Seven Penny Brin Drive along with my wife Fay, and we've been there since 1974. And I know that I'm speaking for a number of the other neighbors who live in the Oakmont section of Scranton, and also some of the neighbors that live on the East Mountainside behind the former Els Club on Cleveland Avenue, which is a neighboring cross street. And I understand that the Oakmont Property Owners Association is also represented by Ann Powell, who is adjacent to me here, and that's the housing development I think Mr. Scanlon had mentioned, which is just up the road on 307 from the former Els Club. We had some procedural issues that we wanted to bring to the attention of the board. First of all, I don't think any of the neighbors are aware of these proceedings or this hearing until this weekend. I haven't met a neighbor yet that has been served with any particular notice that somebody saw it on a tree or a post. Mr. Sweeney said that he posted the property. Nobody owns by that property. So at this point in time, really, the neighbors have just been talking amongst themselves, were aware of the hearing, and wanted to be here to express their concerns, and to some extent, all objections, but particularly the fact that there was not an appropriate time to hire lawyers, get experts, and therefore, under the Municipal Planning Code, Provision 908, we would request a hearing to be able to rebut any testimony that's been presented by the applicant.
Just a second. Excuse me one second. Jack, there's no names of-
I would like to respond to that.
Okay.
I, on Friday, I'm not sure of the date. I believe it was March-
April 5?
No, no. Friday, I believe it was March 29th, I think it was. It was the first property I posted. I posted ten different postings on different telephone poles in the neighborhood, including across the street in your area, Richard. I also handed out over fifteen different notices on both sides of 307. I can't say any more than that, except that I've more than exceeded my requirements as far as posting is concerned. I'm from East Mountain, and I thought this might be an issue, so I wanted to make sure that it was properly posted, and in my opinion, it certainly was.
Do you know what letters were sent to any neighbors, were there?
Hand-delivered. Hand-delivered, hand-delivered to-
I know most of the neighbors, Jack, and I haven't seen any yet that said that they received one, except that it's on a poll.
Again, the poll was one a part of it, also for the part of it, it was the Scranton Times advertisements in the legal section twice. And lastly, again, I would say at least twelve to fifteen postings were handed out on both sides of 307.
Again, debating that, we did not have adequate time to- we'd request a time for another hearing so that the testimony of people opposed would be able to be presented in a cogent fashion, and for the neighborhood associations to engage their own counsel if they choose to do so.
At this point, we'll proceed with what we have to then, and if you feel additional testimony needs to be taken, we'll consider that request at the conclusion of what we have tonight.
All right. The second thing, procedure, that I wanted to bring up is that the application that we saw, and Mr. Scanlon referred to, and it was sent to me by the city, and I appreciate that, but I got it Sunday night around midnight, the application was filed by, as an owner, an entity that no longer owns the property. We saw that there was a deed, it was reported in yesterday's, or Tuesday morning's newspaper, yeah, Tuesday morning's newspaper, that RSP Enterprise, which is listed as the owner on the application, no longer owns the property. So therefore, we think it's an invalid application when you sell the property right in the middle of the process. Also, the application itself is signed by somebody, I couldn't really make out the name on this application, but it's something called Forever Sammy, which is not an owner of the property, and from what we can tell, is not even a tenant in the property because they said leases are to be negotiated. I think this application is way premature because it's not signed by the right people. It doesn't reveal who is involved in this process or project, and I say it's not even complete in terms of what's going on. In terms of the application or the narrative that was attached to it, it talks about partial hospitalization of PHP program, which is mentioned by Mr. Scanlon, but it doesn't indicate on that narrative that there'd be anybody living there overnight. But we understand that there is thirty-two-bed facility, or thirty-bed, thirty or thirty-two, I think Shane said thirty-
Thirty.
Thirty-two beds on the application that would be there as actually a residential facility, whereas the explanation of PHP, it's a non-residential facility. So again, I think it's a very misleading application that needs further thought, and there's nobody in the neighborhood that has been able to speak to anybody who is promoting this project to even explain what's going to go on there.
Mr. Scanlon, you want to talk about the relationship between RSP Diamond 307 and Forever Sammy?
Jack, just to back up on it, so you're fully confident that the postings, the notifications were handed out, and you're fully confident that everything was done correctly according to the rule?
I'm more than confident that I fulfill- please, please, please. I'm more than confident that I fulfill my obligations.
Thank you. Along with our application, there were included two affidavits. One was an affidavit of Jack Thomas with an address, if I can read it into the record, with an address of 202 Karen Drive in Scranton, being duly sworn according to law, deposes and says, "I'm a member of a limited liability company, RSP Enterprise LLC. As a member of the RSP Enterprise LLC, I am authorized to make decisions affecting the business affairs and assets of this limited liability company. RSP Enterprise LLC is the owner of the property located at 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway, Scranton, Pennsylvania. RSP Enterprise LLC has entered into an agreement of sale with Diamond 307 LLC to convey all of its rights and interests to Diamond 307 LLC. Further, it is hereby acknowledged that the subject property shall be used for a partial hospitalization treatment facility, the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility. RSP Enterprise LLC hereby authorizes Diamond 307 LLC and the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility to make application to the City of Scranton Zoning Hearing Board for any zoning requests necessary to utilize the subject property as a treatment facility." Signed and notarized by Jack Thomas. Also included was an affidavit-
That was not part of the application, was circulated by anybody from the City of Scranton? I have not seen it. It's a first I heard. The one that we had, even was part of the application, was signed by William Rinaldi on March 14, 2019, where he said he's a member of Diamond 307 LLC. We saw not a stamp by Mr. Thomas, not a-
If I may, the second affidavit is an affidavit of William Rinaldi, and it states that I, William Rinaldi, am a member of Diamond 307 LLC, interested party having authorization of RSP Enterprise LLC, landowner of the property at 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway, Scranton, PA. The Forever Sammy Treatment Facility shall maintain a treatment facility at said address as a tenant pursuant to a lease agreement. The lease agreement is in the drafting phase. Diamond 307 LLC hereby authorizes the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility, as an applicant, to apply for a special exception before the City of Scranton Zoning Hearing Board to utilize the subject property as a partial hospitalization treatment facility, signed by William Rinaldi on March 14 of 2019, also notarized.
Could you make that first affidavit part of the record? I'm not sure whether it is yet or not.
You have it.
I have the second one. I don't, in my packet, that doesn't mean it's not someplace in the city.
We don't have it as well, Jim.
Yeah. That could be someplace with the city, but it's not in my packet.
I submitted the second affidavit from Jack Thomas on March 19, 2019, to Officer Sweeney, along with the site plan of 125 Scranton-Pocono Highway, Scranton.
Okay, so if you could give us another copy of that, please.
If I may, I'll comment to make any further-
If you could just grab that microphone for me, please.
I'm sorry, I'm loud. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we saw that the application, and I asked some questions about it, was filed for a, basically, under 806-G, as I recall, a non-conforming use transferred to another non-conforming use. However, in research, we have obtained from the city, we don't believe that's a non-conforming use, that the last application that was filed by Geisinger was a variance, and the variance was submitted back in 1986 before Geisinger bought it because they wanted to make sure that there were no objections to its use of the facility. And the case law, which has been provided, and I gave that to Attorney Scanlon and Attorney Scanlon, the case, that's the leading case on the subject, we call it the mushroom case, is in Pierazio, which indicates that a property that is granted a variance cannot be considered a non-conforming use. So at this point in time, we don't think the application is accurate because it is not a non-conforming use, it's a variance, and if the applicant really wants to do this project, would have to reply, as did Geisinger, for a variance.
You, that application for variance was what year, 1986?
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance that we're working under is 1993. The definition of the 1993 ordinance defines non-conforming use as a use, whether by land or structure, which does not comply with the applicable use provisions of this ordinance, meaning the 1993, where such use was lawfully in existence prior to the enactment of this ordinance. Since it was lawfully approved in 1986, it would qualify as a non-conforming use under the definition of the 1993 ordinance that we're working from.
Well, we disagree. I think that there's a procedure for all non-conforming uses at the time of the adoption of the ordinance to be listed, and we could find no listing for that non-conforming use. We don't believe it's grandfathered in. It's clearly given by a variance. There's going to be no doubt about that, and there's never been a non-conforming use or a special exception obtained at any time since then.
And I'm not disagreeing with you on that part of it, but I'm just saying that the 1993 ordinance defines non-conforming use as the type of use that we have there right now. So we're going to go forward with the hearing as a non-conforming use.
And we're noting for the record-
And you can note your objection, yes.
Okay.
If I may, I would like to, I'm Ann Lavelle Powell. I'm counsel here for Oakmont Park Apartments, which is directly across the street from the facility, or the proposed facility. The owners of Oakmont Park Apartment, who are located in Hackensack, New Jersey, got notice of this proceeding at about 10 o'clock this morning. So I join with Mr. Bishop in that we really have not had enough, they did not have enough notice in order to actually prepare or to present objections at this hearing, and I believe that notice of the here, as an adjoining property owner, they were entitled to receive notice in writing.
I would say this, I posted right across from their office a posting and hand-delivered to their office notices on March 29.
Right.
So again, I think that's satisfactory as far as I'm concerned.
Jack, is there a reason, just curious, is there a reason why they're not mailed to the property owners?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up because over the course of the years, we were mailing them out to the addresses provided in the applications, and in most cases, the mailing addresses were no good. We were getting the vast majority of our mailings returned, undeliverable, no such address, et cetera. So we decided years, several years ago, that it would be better to physically hand-deliver the notices to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Has Mr. Conneboy been sworn?
Yes, he was.
He has, okay.
Mr. Conneboy, would you please tell the members of the zoning hearing board where you're employed?
I've been employed at Clearbrook Rehabilitation Center for the last nineteen years.
And would you please tell the audience in what capacity you've been employed at Clearbrook?
I started as a business administrator. I became the clinical director, and then for twelve years, I was vice president of Clearbrook until this past March, when we were purchased by Banyon Corporation. And I'm now the director of spiritual programs.
Mr. Conneboy, do you yourself have personal experience with substance abuse issues?
I am sober thirty-three years. May 7th, I'll be sober thirty-four years, hopefully. I went to, 1985, I went through Marworth and then a place called Lena Lodge in Blairstown, New Jersey for long-term, and I've been sober consistently for thirty-three years.
Mr. Conneboy, in your nineteen years at Clearbrook, can you please tell us how many people you've treated?
We have treated literally tens of thousands. We treat more than sixteen-hundred people a year. We are a sixty-eight-bed facility, and it has been that way since I've been there in 2000, since 2000, excuse me.
Mr. Conneboy, can you please discuss the need of a treatment facility in our community?
I'm from this community, and I'm from the recovery community also, and I have a very large family that lives in this community. And I will tell you that it is exceptionally necessary that we get a treatment facility up here. Twenty-eight-day program, and it sounds strange coming from someone who ran twenty-eight-day programs for so long, but a twenty-eight-day program does not prepare you to go back onto the streets the minute you get out of treatment. We prepare you to be dried out, essentially. We prepare you to get all the tools that you need to get and stay sober, but this area has seen an epidemic in heroin and opiate abuse. As Mr. Scanlon said, we had over a hundred die last year. It is getting worse and worse, and they're getting younger and younger. Kids in high school are starting by using heroin rather than drinking and using marijuana as it used to be back in my day. It is an absolute epidemic, and we have an absolute shortage. I will tell you that in all of my years at Clearbrook, we have been looking for places to facilitate putting patients as they finish a twenty-eight-day program in order to be rehabilitated properly and get ready to go back into society, get a job. Not only get a job, learn, you'd be surprised the number of patients who can't write a check, never learned how to write a check. You'd be surprised at the number of patients who can't shop. You'd be surprised at the number of patients who can't make a bed or go to work. That's what we're hoping to do at this facility.
Mr. Conneboy, what would your role be in this facility?
I would be the executive director of the facility.
And can you tell us what that would entail?
I would be running the day-to-day operations of the facility. I would be doing the hiring of the counselors and supervisors and direct patient care people. I would be setting up the programs for rehabilitation, not just during the day. The first twenty days that somebody would be in this facility, they would be in the facility. They would stay within the facility. It would be later on that they would go out for occupational therapy, learn how to apply for a job, get a job, work with, hopefully, union officials and electricians and plumbers and carpenters, and learn a trade so that they are not going back on the streets and they're not the typical person that people seem to think of, a drug addict and an alcoholic. Again, that's me, and I don't think that I am what the person a lot of people here think of as a drug addict and an alcoholic. I would hope not anyhow.
Mr. Conneboy, would you describe how you see the facility working as a treatment center?
We would take in only people who have been detoxed and properly gone through a treatment center before they come to this center. They would be screened and urine-tested when they come in. We would do a daily program, Monday through Friday at least, of programs, CBT, spirituality, perhaps yoga, perhaps whatever else we could fit in. There's a lot of programs. They would go to classes every day, meetings at night of Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics After twenty days at the facility, we hope to establish, which would also be part of my duties, establishing contacts within the community and outside of the community, if necessary, for these people to get the training they need to go on and get jobs and become tax-paying citizens.
Can you describe the types of therapy you envision?
Well, we do a lot of CBT therapy. We do one-on-one counseling. We do group counseling, twelve-step programs that have been proven over the years to work.
Mr. Conneboy, how many people will be treated at the facility on a daily basis?
Up two and a maximum of thirty.
How many counselors would be engaged?
There would be three counselors and a counseling clinical director.
How many people would be employed at the facility on a given day?
I'm not positive. I think about nineteen.
If I may, I'm going to show you what has been provided as, I'm sorry, I'm going to give you what's been provided as a facility plan, and I'll let you take a look at this.
While we're waiting, Mr. Conneboy, just two questions I can ask, and first, I want to step away from the board for a second. I want to commend you on your journey and congratulate you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure having you speak before us.
It's a pleasure to be here.
What is the age of your clients? What would be the age barrier?
Eighteen to whatever. It would be all male, by the way, from eighteen to whatever. The average age right now in treatment is about twenty-seven or twenty-eight, but we have, at Clearbrook, I can tell you that we have a number of fifty-plus patients.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Scanlon.
Mr. Conneboy, this, Mr. Scanlon just handed us this, facility personnel, these are the employees you anticipate hiring? The facility director, clinic director, all those?
Yes.
It doesn't say that there's going to be a doctor of any kind. Is there going to be a doctor on duty, or?
There will not be a doctor. We will not be administering any medications whatsoever.
No, I don't mean for dispensing of medication. I mean for patients sometimes get ill when they're there, need medical care. What happens in that kind of a situation?
We would get a hold, I don't have the answer to that right away, but we would get a hold of a doctor, certainly. We would also, in all likelihood, probably contract with local psychologists to come in at certain periods during the day.
If I can piggyback off of that question, and I'll get back to this sheet, if I may. If I can piggyback off of that question, and I'll get back to this sheet, if I may, will you have an internal security plan, so that if there were an incident, something that the staff would be trained to do?
Absolutely, the staff will be, the direct care staff in particular, will be cross-trained in security, as well as in care of the patients. We will not be hiring anyone who is newly out of recovery, as a lot of the facilities around the area tend to do, I've seen that not work time and time again. We will hire people that have a reputation for staying sober themselves, and they will be cross-trained to do security work as well. We will have an emergency plan, which will include, as you said, a doctor, if a doctor is necessary.
So, in this document that I had provided, can you explain the amount of people that we see running the day-to-day operations?
Yes, the director of operations, or COO, will be doing all of the work, along with the compliance director, to make sure that we are within all of the requirements of BDAP of Pennsylvania, the Bureau of Drug and Alcohol. Pennsylvania will be following all of their directives for minimum staffing, et cetera. We will, however, for example, the requirements are that we have one security person on for 30 people at night, we will have three. We will be doing above and beyond each of the requirements. The direct care staff are residential technicians, who, again, will be in recovery themselves, and be working with the recovery end of this plan on a daily basis. They will be there 24 hours a day.
I also see a facility director, clinical director, support services manager, human resources.
The clinical director is the gentleman I talked about before, that will be a supervisor for all of the counselors. His job will be to make sure that the counselors are doing what they're supposed to be doing, as well as the groups doing what they're supposed to be doing. The gentleman we have in mind, and we're just, again, starting with all of this, but the gentleman we have in mind has 30 years in the business.
I also see direct care staff, technicians, receptionist, billing, maintenance, and janitorial. Is that the approximate staff that you see?
That's the approximate staffing for the whole building, yes, sir.
You spoke about security officers and security measures being in place with the internal management control plan. Will there be fire drills? Will there be training for people to call 911 in case of incidents, things of that nature?
As I said, we will have a complete emergency plan done, which will require, fire drills will require people being aware of the local police. I can tell you that, again, at Clearbrook, I've been there over 19 years, and at Clearbrook, in the 19 years I've been there, there's been one fight, and the state police were called in, and that was resolved immediately. But we will train everyone as to the local police forces, and who responds, and when they respond, and what to do.
In addition to the internal management control plan, will there be a curfew in place?
There will be a curfew of 10 o'clock every evening for all of those, including those who are out working. So, hopefully, they will not be doing 3 to 11 jobs. There will be a 10 o'clock curfew, and, again, we will have staff on hand 24 hours a day to make sure that the patients are where they are supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there.
Do you anticipate structural activities throughout the day and night for residents?
We will have groups, as I said before, individual sessions for each of the patients, groups for each of the patients. We will have meetings, will be held, Alcoholics Anonymous and Narcotics Anonymous meetings. I am a firm believer in the 12-step process, but they will be busy all day long and each night.
Can you tell me where smokers would gather to smoke?
Yes, there will be no outside smoking. We have a lounge area that's being created, I'm not sure what it used to be, at the Ochs Club or Geisinger, I think it was a pharmacy, actually. We are converting that to the smoking area for those who smoke.
If a group of residents were to be taken off premises to go somewhere, how would they be transported?
We are leasing a vehicle, a 12-person van, anytime anybody goes off the grounds, they will be escorted by our employees, and driven by our employees. That includes, by the way, if someone decides that they want to leave this treatment facility, we will certainly try our best to talk them out of it, but should they not be talked out of it, they will be escorted by us to wherever they're going.
Will people staying in the program be allowed to have vehicles?
They will be allowed to have vehicles, but, again, I have to say that in the 19 years I've been at Clearbrook, very rarely do patients have vehicles. We have 68 beds at Clearbrook. Up until this week, we had one car there of a patient, and he left yesterday. So, there are no vehicles, and that's been the way it's been at Clearbrook most of the time. Again, we're not looking at people who have the greatest of skills to begin with, so most of them probably would not have vehicles.
Will any medications be prescribed?
Never.
Will this be a detox facility?
No, they will have to be properly detoxed before they come to us, we are not a detox.
Will there be any methadone, suboxone, or any other medications given out to people participating in your program?
No, as the executive director, one of my staunchest beliefs is that maintenance programs do not work. And there will not be any suboxone, there will not be any methadone, ever, at this facility.
Will urine tests be conducted in a random fashion?
We will do urines as soon as somebody is accepted at the facility. We will then do random urinalysis on a nightly basis. In particular, once the patients go out to work and come back in, they will be tested.
Will persons and their property coming into the facility be subject to searches?
We will be training, again, as I said, cross-training all of the residential techs, and that includes not only searching all of the property that comes in, suitcases, gym bags, backpacks, clothing, but also checking the person themselves who come in. Body checks are still done.
Can we speak about, excuse me, the anticipated design of the facility? Do you plan on increasing the footprint of the building, or making any additions to the building?
No, we do not.
Would you discuss the floor plan for the members of the zoning hearing board, please?
I think we have a... By the way, I should mention that this may be confusing as to the front or the back. Anyone coming into the facility will be coming in from the back of the facility, that will be the entrance. The front entrance will not be used. They'll come around to the back of the facility. This will be the front of the facility, which will not be used after then. These rooms will be patient rooms, but they will not be going in and out of the facility through the front door. We will have 30 beds in these rooms, and the rooms that are designated as patient rooms here, each individual will have their own room. The dining area will be off of what was the old... I'm sorry, sorry. Off of what was the old kitchen, this will be the dining area. We are removing some walls in order to facilitate that, but we are not expanding on the building at all. We will have a large community area for visitations on weekends, on Sundays, when families, when family participation is a very big factor, people get it well. And any place I've ever been, the family program is big. We will do that in the center here. There's a fireplace, there's some sofas, some television, that sort of thing in there.
You touched on this, if you would, step to the microphone, just so everyone can hear you. Thank you. You've stated that the back of the building will be the main comings and goings for the facility.
Yes, sir.
The parking lot is also located in the back of the building, correct?
The parking lot is located in the back of the building, we would, again, use that for employees mostly. There will be no parking along the fence line, no parking in the area that overlooks the lake.
How many long-term patient rooms do you have on that floor plan?
We have 30.
What will be the hours of operation for the facility?
We will operate 24 hours a day with the residential part, but the program itself will run from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with the classes, and discussions, and lectures, and whatever that goes on.
And how will patients be monitored upon leaving the facility?
Upon...
Like, if they're coming and going from the facility, will they be checked, monitored?
They will be escorted by members of our staff, they will be monitored, they will be drug and alcohol tested at all times. But there won't be much leaving of the building, again, initially, for the first 20 days, there won't be any leaving of the building, and then it would be only after they have successfully completed that part of the program, that they would go on to the vocational rehabilitation part of the program.
Thank you.
And there is no outside activity planned at all.
Thank you, I don't have further questions for Mr. Conneboy.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that you're going to have a training vocational whatever, or is it going to be you that transports them back and forth?
Yes, sir.
Should they get a job?
Not me, myself, but somebody from our staff, yes, sir.
The facility itself will take care of getting them to and from work.
Absolutely, we have, we have a 12-person van that we are leasing, and we will take them to and from their job. Yes, sir.
I also have a couple of questions I wrote down. You mentioned that no narcotics of any kind will be dispensed, methadone, suboxone, how about the patients who are on prescribed medications for any other reason? How will they be dispensed, and who will be dispensing them?
If they are on, for example, antidepressants, we will have a staff member that is trained in order to pass out antidepressants, but that would be about the only drug. Anti-anxiety drugs, those sorts of things, will not be used at this facility.
And you mentioned how visiting is very important, how often would that occur?
I'm sorry?
Visiting, would that occur?
Visiting would occur on Sundays.
After the 20-day, on Sundays, even during the 20-day program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
I have a couple, Mr. Conneboy.
Yes, sir.
The matrix that you gave us for your shifts, how many people will be on third shift, Monday through Friday?
At least three.
I'm only seeing one. Am I missing something on the part timers, or?
There will be three people on Monday through Friday on third shift.
And weekends, same thing, three?
Same thing.
Okay. Couple more. You stated earlier that if I was there and I had a job, secured a job, which is great, and it's 3 to 11, would you allow an allowance for that person that's working 3 to 11, or do they strictly have to be in by 10 o'clock regardless?
No, they have to be in by 10 o'clock.
Okay, so, obtaining a job, it becomes a little bit harder.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct, okay.
And again, that's part of the learning process, too, hopefully, that we instruct people on how to look for jobs to work within the parameters that they're living. Because, again, most people who are coming through rehab either don't have a job, have lost a job, or are going back to a job that wasn't working out for them very well.
Okay. Touching on Ms. Newcomb's question about the medications, it'll be a trained staff member, but will the drugs or medications, I don't want to use the word drugs, but the medications be under lock and key?
They'll be under lock and key, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Urine failures, how many before they're asked to leave the program?
One.
One, okay, thank you. And I think you might have touched on this before, so patients aren't free to come and go.
They are not.
Are the doors locked so they cannot get out while they're in that facility, or are they able to exit if they want to exit and walk out? I mean, if they get an urge to walk Lake Scranton?
If they get an urge to lock Lake Scranton, they would have to go through us, the doors will be locked, they'll have to go through some staff member.
Okay.
And they will not be allowed to walk Lake Scranton.
I know that, but you're not getting that, I mean...
Yes, sir.
Nice day, and you look out, it looks inviting, so...
I agree with you, yes, sir.
And what's the maximum number of days a patient can be at your facility? If they go through the program for the first part of it, can they reenter?
It would be from 28 to 90 days.
Okay. And what happens after 90 days if they don't?
Hopefully, we will have gotten them to the point where they are able to reestablish themselves in society. We will help them set up an after-care plan, we'll set up for outpatient after-care plan. If they're still struggling, they can come back during the day, to our facility during the day. But hopefully, we will have an after-care plan put in place for them to further their recovery.
And if a patient is 19 days into it, and they want to leave, where do they go? Do they just get turned to the street, or is there something that your program provides, maybe another facility, they direct them?
We will, again, offer them an after-care program. We will set up what we can for them, but whether or not they go, to be honest with you, most of the people who leave treatment against medical advice or against clinical advice don't follow up with the program.
And your...
But we will offer them certainly an after-care program.
Good. And your employees, do they all be background-checked completely, full compliance of everything?
Absolutely, sir, I've seen...
Are they, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the second part, are they urine tested as well, since some of them were recovering?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I've seen too many younger people going in and trying to work in this type of area, and they just aren't ready for it. This is not for the weak of stomach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick question, how about, like, deliveries? Is there going to be, like, food trucks coming in and out of there? How do they eat?
There will be a food truck probably a couple of times a week, yes, sir.
Okay.
We will prepare their food for them.
Okay. And how about lighting on the outside? Any kind of area lighting, or?
Somebody else will have to speak to, I'm not sure about the lighting.
If I may, our next witness will address that.
Thank you.
Can I just elaborate on your no-outdoor activities? You said no-outdoor activities.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean no-outdoor time at all, like, they're not allowed to be off premises at all?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they're just staying indoors at all times?
They'll stay indoors at all.
Unless they're leaving the premises with the... Okay.
I know how that sounds, but that's what works.
I've been through this before, so I just wanted to know how yours was working. Not for myself, sorry.
If the board's done, may the attorneys have questions for Mr. Conneboy?
If I may. Mr. Conneboy, you indicated that as part of the therapy, that the ongoing therapy, there's one-on-one, as well as AA and Narcotics Anonymous meetings. Are they open to other people in the community, or just to the residents at the facility?
Initially, it will be just the people in the facility. Eventually, we hope to have some open meetings there.
Okay. And what time of day would they normally occur?
Around 7 o'clock in the evening.
So that eventually, then, there would be other individuals? So that there, eventually, then, there would be other individuals coming into the facility in the evening?
A limited number, yes, ma'am.
And you also indicated that on Sundays, that there would be actually visiting programs. How many people would normally participate in those types of programs? If you have thirty people...
If you have thirty people there, the, the most that you would expect, we at Clearbrook allow three visitors per person, but at this facility, we'll probably be two visitors per person.
Okay.
And again, we're not gonna have thirty people right off the bat. That's, I think, something that needs to be said, too, that we will build up to thirty people.
Okay. And, or some confusion, you indicated that there's, there's a ten PM curfew, but, and there was a question about if, after the first twenty days, if someone has, if they're able to obtain employment, they would have to be back in the facility by ten o'clock?
Yes, they would.
And it would be your van that, that would be picking them up at their workplace and taking them back in?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And just, and one other question. Is, was Lackawanna County Drug Court gonna, or are they gonna be using this facility, or will it be associated with the county programs at all?
We hope they will be. We, we hope they will be. We have run the idea by some of the judges.
Okay. All right. I have nothing.
I, I, sorry. I just wanna clarify. I was never a patient in, in a facility. I, I've had family and friends in facilities.
I was a patient, so it's okay.
Nothing wrong with that. When you, when you have visiting, on visiting days, are they gonna be subjected to any sort of, like a, like a family meeting, like, like, maybe like a...
Yes, absolutely. And we just recently at Clearbrook started, if you come to visit your loved ones at Clearbrook, you go to a meeting first.
Okay.
And you, and deal with the family person there, and then you get to meet for certain hours.
Dan, I'm worried if I can ask that question. From what you indicated, treatment court would indicate to me that you would be having residents who are coming from the legal system having committed crimes. Is that correct?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Okay, so would we know, if criminal records exist for the residents that you're having, what percentage of the people that you expect to have there would be considered criminals or having a criminal record?
I couldn't possibly answer that.
How does it work at Clearbrook?
At Clearbrook, we, they take very, as a matter of fact, since the new owners bought it, they take very few people from the legal system, but I will tell you that probably forty percent of the people who are there have had some run-in with the legal system, whether it's DWI or shoplifting or something of that nature.
So would, you would say these people are gonna be on probation and parole?
I don't know that.
Mr. Conneboy, in terms of the application, which I looked over, and it was signed by the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility. Do you know what that is?
Yes, I do. Forever Sammy Treat, the Forever Sammy Group is Marty Heenan and his wife, who lost their daughter Sammy Heenan to this drug epidemic. What they will be doing is leasing space in the building.
But they're not gonna be running the building?
No, they are not.
With the programs in there. So to that extent, the application is completely wrong, when it says that the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility is the applicant.
I have nothing to do with the application. I don't know.
What is the applicant? Who, who is the applicant? Who would be running this program?
I'll be running the program.
And who, what company or entity or business entity is that?
I have no company. I am Dick Conneboy Jr.
So you'd be working for somebody?
Yes, I will be.
We don't know who that is?
It will be the, what's the name of it? Diamond Three Oh Seven LLC.
And are you the owner of Diamond?
No, I'm not. I'm not a party to that at all.
Is that, is that a company that exists at the present time?
Yes, it is.
Does it have employees, workers, or programs?
I don't know that. I'm not privy to that information.
So it's a startup that hasn't existed or operated anything so far?
I can't answer that for you, Richard.
Well, have you seen, have you seen the application for the, for the, basically, the special exception that brings us here today?
I have.
Do you know who signed it?
I do not know who signed it.
If you saw it, would you be able to recognize who signed it? You didn't sign this, did you?
I didn't sign it, no, sir.
Maybe...
I was brought into this after the application was filed.
So shouldn't the application be filed by you or somebody who was involved in this enterprise?
It has, it is.
Dan?
Objection is noted of record. Continue.
Shane, do you know who, who did sign this application?
Don Rinaldi.
That's a signature down here? I know it's, it's a notary. Doesn't look at the main.
It's William, really, so...
Is Mr. Rinaldi a part of the ownership of this organization?
Yes, he is.
Is he the sole owner?
Yes, he is.
He's the sole owner. And does he have anything to do with the Forever Sammy Treatment Facility?
The Forever Sammy Treatment Facility actually does not exist.
So really, the application that was submitted and all the literature here, talking about Forever Sammy and, and the family that you mentioned, and, and the daughter who died, has really nothing to do with this organization or facility, does it?
They will be leasing space in the building.
Well, Attorney Scalen mentioned that there's, but there is no lease. It's being negotiated.
It is being negotiated.
And that's why I said, I believe, in the beginning, this is very premature. We don't have an organization. We don't have a structure. We don't have a business. We don't have a lease, and you're here looking for zoning, a special exception? Isn't this too early for that?
I don't believe so.
I note for the record that I don't think that the application is proper, when it's not. The organization's name on there has nothing to do with the people that are gonna be running the place.
So noted.
Now, I did wanna ask you, 'cause I was interested in, in the difference between what you're familiar with, what we're familiar with, and, and the idea of an inpatient facility, which I believe Clearbrook is an inpatient facility.
Yes, it is.
And you said that operates for the first twenty-eight days, and that's pretty much what the insurance companies provide.
Correct.
And after the twenty-eight days, people are sort of left on their own, either go back home, or they're cured, or whatever, right?
Or they're sent to a place like this, PHP.
This is a new thing. It's a PHP.
It's not new. It has been going on all over the country for quite a while.
Since about nineteen, two thousand and fourteen or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's under the Obama, after the, what do they call it? The Obamacare?
I have no idea if it's under Obama's...
Obamacare.
...plan or not.
Protective health. Anyway, at the end, at the end of the day, I, I read this narrative, it said, you're filling a niche, because people who are twenty-eight days or intimidated by an inpatient facility need something that's different than an inpatient facility.
Intimidated by an inpatient?
It's what it said. It said they feel it's gonna be the one flew over, I don't know if you read what your narrative was, they believe that going into a place like a facility, like Clearbrook, would be considered like a building from one flew over the cuckoo's nest, so they don't wanna be in a facility where they're confined. Therefore, partial hospitalization is a day program, and they live at home.
They don't do well at home. That's part of the problem.
Okay, but this narrative talks about the difference between partial...
I have not seen that narrative.
Oh, yeah, that was the, that's the whole essence of this application, and the justification...
I told you before, I did not see the application. I've come along after the application was submitted.
Well, let me just quote one part of it. You can comment, since you're, you know, expert in the business. What is beneficial of a partial hospitalization, PHP?
I would like to object, being that you stated you didn't see the application, hasn't read the application, come on board after the filing of the application.
If it deals with the program, I'll allow it.
Okay, so the beneficial of, what is beneficial, I'm quoting, of a PHP as opposed to inpatient, is that a twenty-eight-day stay in an inpatient facility can run anywhere from eighteen thousand dollars to upwards of sixty thousand dollars, depending on the program. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. PHP is the same comprehensive, detailed, intense level of treatment, just made extremely more affordable and lasting for a much longer length of time.
Yes, sir.
It also makes stepping down levels of care much easier. How would that work? If, if, if twenty-eight days costs eighteen to sixty thousand dollars, how about days twenty-nine through ninety that you mentioned? Who's paying for that?
Insurance companies pay very willingly, and they, you'd have to ask them why they figured out it works longer than that.
Well, it says in your narrative, or their narrative...
Again, I didn't see that.
I know you didn't write it, but you're an expert in the industry.
I've told you three times, I haven't seen that application yet.
Well, you should read it. More importantly, insurance companies would rather pay out for PHP treatment services than inpatient treatment.
Yes, they do.
And what's the reason for that?
You'd have to ask the insurance companies.
But in this position, 'cause I don't see any difference between inpatient at Clearbrook and inpatient at the...
Well, the difference is that our patients will be going out to do things during the day after twenty days. It's a big difference. When you're in, in twenty-eight-day program, you don't leave the grounds either. You are there for twenty-eight days. Our patients will be going out, getting training, getting life training, getting job training, getting everything they can to prepare them to go back into society and be tax-paying citizens. It's a big difference.
Do you know what the rate of insurance is gonna pay for that program compared to the inpatient?
I know what some of the rates are, yes, sir.
And, and who pays those? Private?
Private insurances. So does Medicaid and Medicare pays for some of it.
So really, when this application says we're different than that, because we're partial hospitalization, because people live at home or live in a sober house, in this case, that's not true. They're gonna be living in this building.
That's true.
So that, this is, and again, an incorrect statements in this application.
No, I believe you're making it incorrect. I don't believe it's an incorrect statement.
Well, here's what it says. "In this level of care, partial hospitalization, a patient or a client continues to live at home, or in a home-like setting, perhaps a sober house or a halfway house, but commutes to a substance abuse treatment center or drug and alcohol treatment facility," which is what you're running, "to receive treatment during the day." So that's false here. These people are gonna be living in this facility.
That's true.
So the application is misleading, if, if not false.
Richard, for the fifth time, I have not seen that application.
I know you didn't see it, but this application was submitted by the owner.
Attorney Bishop, I think he's explained what his program is. It is, appears to be different than what was in the application, but...
That's my point.
That's his program.
But that's what we're, we're here...
Right.
On the submission, if you don't submit an accurate application, it should be rejected.
No, they're, they're giving reasons for, for why it's needed. Mr. Conneboy is now up here telling us what this particular program is gonna be.
A few, a few more questions. Mr. Conneboy, were you familiar at all with, with the Geisinger Clinic? Had you ever visited the Geisinger?
I had not.
So you haven't been in the building since it was the Elks closed?
I have been in the building. I've been there at least four times over the last two weeks.
Okay. And, of course, you didn't negotiate for the purchase of the building from...
I had nothing to do with it.
From Geisinger. But it's been there for close to forty years. It was apparently taken over in nineteen eighty-six.
I was there when the Elks Club was there, yes, sir.
And I was, too. But the Geisinger facility was a daytime program. It was like doctor's office, right? It was a clinic.
I, I couldn't answer that for I don't know.
Do you know anything about the hours of operation for Geisinger at that facility?
I have no idea.
Or whether they were open on weekends or just during the week?
No idea.
Yeah. And you know how many doctors they, they would have housed there at, at any given time?
No, sir.
Or how many people were using, using the facility during the day?
No idea.
Okay. Well, we present, we have information as to that, but since you're not familiar with it, I won't ask you those questions.
Mr. Bishop, you done?
No, I just had a few, a few more questions. In terms of, the Elks Club facility hasn't really changed in, in the years that it's become Geisinger. The traffic patterns, I understand, caused a lot of accidents between people coming in and out of there. Are you familiar with that at all?
I'm not at all familiar with that, Richard. I will say, however, that most patients do not have a car, so going in and out would be very limited.
Now, we talked about the concept, you would not have any of your residents living in a sober house or in the community or coming and, and going to this facility. Is that correct?
Not unless they finish the program completely, they finish ninety days successfully, they go out and they run into a problem. They're welcome to come back during the day and participate in the problem, the, the programs during the day.
Okay, so what I read in the newspaper about Forever Sammy running sober houses, that would have nothing to do with this?
Has nothing to do with this, sir.
Even though they filed the applica, signed the app, or initiated the application under their name? Okay. So none of those residents in those sober houses would be residents?
No, sir.
Okay. I have no other questions.
I, I, sorry, I, to be repetitious, I have one more question about those visitors. Will they be monitored and checked, security, any, you know, to check them for any kind of paraphernalia or anything like that?
Oh, absolutely.
So there will be a, there'll be a security process when a visitor comes through?
There will be a very tight security process. And as I said, along with clothing checks and, and personal belongings checks, body checks will be done.
So to the visitors as well? I know you mentioned the patients. I didn't know if you were referring to the visitors. That, that's it, my...
Thank you.
Mr. Conneboy, I have a couple of questions. The organization that you're working for, that's, I guess, led by Mr. Rinaldi, do they have any other treatment facilities?
They do not.
So this is their first venture into this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And let's go back to the, your patients coming from drug court. Are they patients that, before they come to you, will go through a detox program?
Yes, sir.
So they won't just come from court to your facility?
They cannot come from court to us unless, again, they're in court after they have been through a, a facility, a twenty-eight-day program. Many times sentencing gets deferred. So if sentencing has been deferred and they are detoxed and ready for treatment, and again, we will have the final say as to whether they're ready for treatment, not the court.
And one more. People come out of drug court, you stated before, some of them have criminal records and stuff. Do you limit the type of record that will come into your place?
Yes, sir.
What would be the requirements that they cannot come into your place? What would the record be?
Violent crimes, violent crimes, rape, arson, those types of crimes would not be allowed in the facility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if Mr. Bishop was concerned with the amount of people in the building, but I've been a patient at that Geisinger facility for a few years, and there are more people in that building during the day, with all the people in the waiting room, all the doctors on staff, all the nurses, the outpatient clinic, all the patients that attend the outpatient clinic, the nurse clinic, far more people in that building in that, you know, a working hour day than there is going to be in this twenty-four hour period. I know you asked if you knew anything about the Geisinger clinic. I went there for several years and it is, it was quite a busy place.
Is it open on weekends too?
No, the outpatient, not that I know of. I had a family member employed there and...
Wasn't open at night either, was it?
They just had an emergency clinic and it's like a walk-in clinic.
It was a nine-to-five operation?
Yeah, it was the same hours.
Any other witnesses?
I'd like to call Jack Verralli.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay, could you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Jack Verralli, 50 Finn Street, Wilkes-Barre, PA.
Just spell your last name, please.
Vizin Valley, A-R-A-L-Y.
Mr. Verralli, would you please explain to the members of the zoning hearing board your background, sir?
Sure. I'm a professional planner. I've been in the field for forty-seven years. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from King's College, a Master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is an organization that gives me professional recognition in all fifty states, including those states which license planners. I'm an instructor for PMPEI, which offers zoning courses throughout the state. And I've probably prepared countless, probably zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, comprehensive plans for more than fifteen municipalities throughout northeastern Pennsylvania. I've also served as an expert witness in courts of common plea and also before zoning hearing boards throughout the state.
Have you testified as an expert in Lackawanna County?
Yes, I have.
I have a copy of your CV I'd like you to take a look at. Can you tell me, is that a fair and accurate copy of your curriculum vitae?
Yes, it is.
Is that a fair and accurate copy?
Yes, it is.
Sir, would you please tell the members of the plan, or the hearing board, how you became involved in this project?
Yes, I was contacted by the owner of the property, Diamond 307 LLC, and was asked to take a look at the zoning regulations in Scranton City that would be applicable to using this facility as a treatment facility, converting it from a medical facility to the treatment facility.
And who engaged you as a consultant?
The owner of that one, which is Mr. Rinaldi.
Thank you. At this point in time, based upon his curriculum vitae and his experience, I would ask that he be admitted as an expert?
Any objection? You continue.
Thank you. Sir, can you tell us who will be occupying the property?
The property would be occupied by the owner of the property, which I mentioned, and it would be used as a treatment facility for people that are coming out of rehab that are still, have gone through successful detoxification, are now required to be in a residential setting to complete their recovery.
Have you had an opportunity to review the application that was submitted in this matter?
Yes, I did.
And what is the application for?
The application is for a special exception for a change of non-conforming use from the Geisinger Medical Clinic, the last use that was in there, to the proposed treatment facility. Both of them are medical facilities, and the only difference, which brings us before the board, is the fact that there is going to be overnight stay of patients at this facility, which is not permitted under the definition of medical clinic. So in order to have that approved as a change of non-conforming use, we're still staying within the realm of medical, but we are going to use it as a treatment facility as a residential program.
And sir, you were also present earlier when there was a discussion of variance versus non-conforming use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell us, based upon your understanding, what this qualifies as?
It qualifies as a change of non-conforming use, very clearly within your ordinance. At the beginning of the outset of the hearing, your solicitor read the definition of non-conforming use with this, which this property certainly meets. Then, when I did further investigation, I had conversations with Mr. Sweeney, and he also confirmed that it would be a change of non-conforming use under Section 806G of your ordinance.
I would like to show you the application that was submitted. Is that a copy of our application?
Yes, it is.
And can you tell me, is this Mr. Rinaldi's signature adorned on the front page?
I believe it is.
And can you tell us why it's important that the owner signs, the owner of the property signs the application?
It's important that the owner sign because when you have a non-conforming use status, such as exists with this particular property, that is a vested right that's passed on from one property owner to the next. So regardless of who owns the property, that non-conforming status does not disappear, and that's why Mr. Rinaldi signed the application as the owner of the property.
Can you tell us where this property is located?
Sure. It's located at 125 Scranton-Pocanale Highway, which is directly fronting off of State Route 307.
And would you describe, before you describe it, can you tell the members of this zoning hearing board, are you familiar with this property?
Yes, I'm familiar with the property. I've walked the site, both into the external visualization of the property and surrounding properties, and I also inspected the interior of the building for those portions that are proposed to be used as a treatment facility.
Would you explain the property to the members of the zoning hearing board?
Sure.
Would you describe what that is that I just handed you?
Sure. The map that I have and that the board is looking at is a site plan of the property as it's currently situated. It contains about 4.3 acres of land, and as you can see, it's sort of pie-shaped, going from right to left with the tip going up towards 309, and the back of the property totally borders the area of Lake Scranton. 307.
Based upon your view of that site plan and your walk of the property, can you describe what abuts?
Sure. The properties that physically abut this particular facility, a proposed facility, are three properties that are on Cleveland Ave that actually have a physical boundary with it. There are other properties that are residential, multi-residential, and single-family that are located in various sections along 307, some of which, with reference to the multifamily apartments being directly across the street.
Can you describe, based upon your walking of that property and that site plan, the vegetative coverings around that facility?
Yes. When you take a look at the property and some aerial photos that I took of it, looking at Google Earth, the entire property has some type of vegetative cover, whether it be tree lines or other type of vegetation on all sides of it. Along the state route, there's vegetative cover that, when you're actually standing out there, some of the building is obscured from visual view, standing on the state route. Then also, along the rear property line that goes back towards Lake Scranton, there is vegetative there, vegetative cover there. And also along the boundary, if you're looking at this property before you, the map, on the far right where the properties abut, the properties on Cleveland Ave abut this particular site. The other thing that's noteworthy with this is when you're on the site, there is, there's a significant elevation difference that does not show on this particular two-dimensional drawing. When you're standing on the area that's going to be used for entrance and exit for the facility that was part of the testimony that preceded myself, it's very difficult to see that area or any of the adjoining properties or 309 from that particular location because it's very secluded.
307.
307. What am I saying?
Please don't speak from the audience. You guys will have your chance to speak, okay?
Sir, can you tell members of the zoning hearing board about the current building?
Yeah, the current building is about 21,000 square feet. It was built in 1969. I found out this evening, there were two prior uses, the last being Geisinger, which occupied it in, I believe, 1986. And the proposed use of the building is they're going to just use the first floor area for the space that they described on their floor plan for the residential treatment program.
In speaking to the nature or character of the area, can you describe the highway for us?
Sure. The highway is a very heavily-traveled highway. You could see that with the volume of traffic just by standing there for a few minutes and watching traffic going up and down the street. And probably the location and the relationship of the highway is probably a factor why, at some point in time, the city of Scranton allowed a commercial use, not paying Geisinger to go in there because it was a very prime location along that area, and it also had very limited interaction or budding properties that were residential that could cause a intrusion.
Based upon your understanding of the property use, do you know where the entrance and exit will be located?
Yes, the entrance and exit, if you look at the map, will be located in the extreme rear of the property, near this triangular portion that is to the very far right. And that was the area that I mentioned earlier, and an extreme difference in elevation between that location and surrounding properties. There is a vegetative cover, and from that point, where the entrance and exit would be for all principal activities going on, it's quite secluded in terms of not being very visible from any adjoining properties.
Speaking to the former use, are you aware of what Geisinger Medical Center did there?
From the information I was able to ascertain, it was doctor's office. I think there was up to thirty medical practitioners in there and a pharmacy. I'm not sure if there was a lab. One report I saw showed that there was lab work done there, but it was quite intensive in terms of the amount of people that that facility served, as patients or going to the pharmacy.
And speaking about the requested use, number one, can you tell us what that would be? And number two, can you tell us, would it be regulated by any agencies?
Yes, the residential component of this operation is regulated by the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. The actual licensing that would be applicable for them to operate this residential facility would be called a non-hospital, drug-free residential treatment facility. I know that's a long term, but that's exactly how it's described in the state law under Title 25, Section 701, when you look at definitions. So that's the definition that they'll be operating under, and it's also the license that will be applicable for the residential component of the property that they intend to operate. The other thing I'd like to mention is, although it was covered in some of my previous testimony, the licensing procedure through DTAP controls the number of patients that could be accommodated in a given location based upon spacing requirements. They regulate the staffing of the facility and also the qualifications of counselors and other people that are involved in the operation. So there is a great deal of oversight of these operations from the state.
Can you tell me, based upon a review of this plan and you seeing the facility, can you tell me how many patients they anticipate treating?
Under the current application, as suggested, it was thirty patients, all of which will be inpatients, would be the maximum number that they will be applying for, for their license. They stated that there would be eleven employees. And when you look at the Table 601 of the zoning ordinance that provides how much parking you need, because this is a very low-intensity use in terms of the number of people that will be going to the facility or operating out of it, the required minimum amount of parking is twenty-seven. When you take a look at this site plan, it covers about eighty-five spaces that are throughout the parking area. So the amount of parking is not going to be an issue because the amount required under the ordinance far exceeds, the amount required far exceeds the actual demand. And the area that will be primarily used for parking and all activities can be encompassed in the far upper right-hand corner that borders Lake Scranton on the front and State Route 307 to the front.
Sir, can you talk about the impacts or effects on the district if this project were to move forward?
If this project were to move forward, I mentioned earlier that at some point in time, the city of Scranton had to make some type of conscious effort or decision to allow the clinic to go into that particular location. So the clinic has been operating, it was operating there from 1986 until probably about a year ago, somewhere in that neighborhood. And I'm not aware, but I didn't check the records, but I'm not sure if there was any information that was generated for complaints for the operation of that facility. Much more intense, much more people worked there, much more traffic going to and from the facility than would be under this one as a lot of the patients would not even have vehicles. If there was not any type of complaints for the operation as Geisinger, then I can't fathom to guess how something that's only a fraction of what the previous operation would, would cause a problem to the character of the neighborhood because the exterior of the building is remaining the same. There's no change in the footprint. The only change would be is the people that are operating it. And when you look at the information concerning medical treatment in medical facilities, medical, a medical facility is a generic term within your ordinance in terms of clinics and so on. What actually takes place within the facility is something that's specific to who's ever being treated. So whether it's Geisinger Medical Facility or this particular facility, they're both providing medical services. This one on a far smaller scale than was previously existed when Geisinger Medical Clinic was at that location.
If the persons receiving care at this facility are suffering from substance abuse disorder, are they granted any protections?
Yes, anybody that is listed as a substance, that's in a substance abuse treatment program under federal law, under ADA, are classified as handicapped individuals. And that's, that's, that's not our opinion or state law, that's federal law. Also, within the context, if you're, if you're classified as a handicapped person, which substance abusers are, you can't deny them or discriminate against them regarding housing choices. So I'm sure you're going to hear testimony tonight that centers on the people that are being treated, but I think that would have to be discounted or balanced with the fact that you cannot make judgment on an application based upon the classification or background of an individual.
And the federal laws that you would speak of are the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act?
That's correct.
Are you aware of any proposed changes to the footprint of the building?
No, there will be no change.
Would you please speak to the members of the zoning hearing board about your take on traffic or truck traffic as a result of the treatment facility?
Well, first of all, there'll be less vehicular traffic in and out of the site than previously existed under Geisinger, just by the nature of the use that was described to you. There will be no large truck traffic coming in. The only type of trucks that would be entering and exiting the site would be panel trucks, delivery trucks for supplies, laundry, food trucks for bringing in meals that would be prepared at site. So there wouldn't be a lot of vehicular traffic going in and out. There's one point of access in and out of the site that exists onto 307. It's about twenty-five-foot-wide driveway. And with the lesser volume of traffic going in and out of the property, if anything, traffic safety would probably be enhanced or at least lessen to any degree that existed previously with the prior use.
Would there need to be any changes made for accessing the property?
No, there would not. In fact, with the lower amount of traffic, the current driveway is more than adequate to serve the needs of the property.
Can you talk about any potential noise, dust, fumes, gases, odors, glare, et cetera?
Those items are usually associated, and they're in your ordinance in terms of a special exception approval. You have to demonstrate that any of those factors with which Attorney Scanlon just mentioned won't be present. They're normally associated with an industrial-type use, something that's in manufacturing or industrial, where you could have those type of ill side effects. By the nature of this project and this property, there won't be any activity such as that that could adversely impact those type of situations that you try to avoid.
Well, we're speaking of potential nuisances such as that. Have you been present for any discussions regarding lighting or outdoor lighting?
Yes, I have.
And can you tell us what we, what the project would do to minimize the effects of any outdoor lighting?
If the project is approved, they would do an assessment of lighting on the property. Any lighting that would be either existing, improved, or upgraded would be have the shielded screens around it to prevent any bleed over onto any other properties. And furthermore, the lighting, the way it would be positioned and directed on the property would be interior and not onto any property lines that go beyond that of the facility.
Sir, can you talk about the amount and character of any outdoor storage?
There won't be any outdoor storage, again, by the nature of this type of business. The only thing that could, would probably be an outside storage, if you could call it that, would be any refuse... it that, would be any refuse containers. And any refuse containers that would be placed on the property, again, would be over into the main activity area on the far right-hand side of the map that we gave to you. In fact, almost all the activities for this project are going to be concentrated in that one specific element of the building.
Can you talk about the hours of operation for the facility?
Yeah, the hours of operation are, it's twenty-four hours, but basically, as you heard from the previous testimony, they do their normal operations in terms of daily routines between seven or eight till five, where people go to counseling, they may go to jobs or to volunteer services, there may be group therapy. So there's a lot of activities that go on that are structured by the provider or the facility that go on during that period of time during the day. And then, of course, there's free time in the evening for looking at TV in the community room, reading a book, just chatting with a friend.
And although the hours of operation may be greater, do you anticipate this being a greater intrusion on the neighborhood?
Not by any means, because the project is very much self-contained, there is not any outdoor activities proposed. So with the control of the applicant over the decision-makings of people that are residents there in terms of where they go, how they get there, I don't see that as being an issue or an issue of concern or a problem.
Can you speak to the compatibility with the surrounding area?
As I said before, at some point in time, a judgment was made by the city of Scranton that a medical facility at this location was in appropriate use. I believe, without looking at records, that probably if I was the person in charge at that point in time, I would look at the location, recognize that it was on a high-traveled highway. I would recognize that there was very limited properties that had budding property lines with it, and that you had the longest length of boundary line going back to Lake Scranton, where no one lives. So throughout the area, I think the issue of compatibility was decided back in 1986, when Scranton allowed the Geisinger facility to locate in that area. By changing it to something that's still a medical facility, but of a less intensive nature, is not going to change really the character of the neighborhood at all. And with the less amount of traffic, and patients, and deliveries, and everything else that would go along with the use, it would be more compatible rather than, less compatible than the existing surroundings.
And I believe you touched on this earlier in your testimony, but to keep it in chronological order, will you speak to parking?
Sure. With parking, there's about eighty-five spaces on the lot. We need, based upon the parking schedule, as I reviewed it for the city, twenty-seven spaces. Again, all the parking is going to stay in this particular corner of the property. We don't intend to use any parking spaces that border residential properties where a rear yard would butt parking areas, so that's not going to be included. We're going to use, out of the eighty-five spaces, probably a very small fraction, I would venture to guess, probably not more than thirty-five, forty at the most, and that would be on a busy day when you had deliveries, people visiting, and other services going on to the facility. So there is more than adequate parking. It does meet the standards of the Scranton zoning ordinance. All the spaces will meet the minimum stall sizes, and all parking spaces will be at least five foot away from any property line with a vegetative buffer or screen within there. But as I said before, we don't intend to use any of the spaces that abut up against residential properties along Cleveland Street where their yards meet this facility.
Sir, in your expert opinion, is this building suitable for a treatment facility?
Very much so. It's designed ideally for it, because when you walk the interior of the building, because it was set up for patient rooms in terms of examining rooms, there's not much that has to be done to the interior to make it readily accessible and convert it into a treatment facility.
Do you believe that the change in use will be any more intrusive than the medical facility that preceded it with up to thirty physicians?
No, I believe it'll be less.
In your opinion, does the use as a treatment facility alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, it does not.
In your opinion, does the use as a treatment facility pose a nuisance to the surrounding area?
No, it will not.
And who would that be regulated by?
It would be the facility itself?
Correct.
DTAP, in terms of drug and alcohol programs. And the thing to remember, it was stated before, the people that are in these facilities are there by choice, for the most part. There could be people that are there that had DUIs, and it was, that was the option that was given to them by the court, where you're not talking about hardened criminals or people of that nature. You're talking about people, everyday people, that got addicted to opioids in some form. It could be somebody that was old and had back problems and was treated with that type of medication and couldn't get off it. It could be an athlete who had some type of injury. So they're not the stereotype of what we would envision to be somebody who was a substance abuser from thirty or forty years ago, which was a very different characterization of that type of person.
Sir, in your opinion, do you believe that the change in use is consistent with the city of Scranton's overall comprehensive zoning plan and why?
I do, because within the city of Scranton's zoning ordinance, there's provisions in the ordinance to change one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use as a special exception. When you look at those provisions, there's standards and criteria that have to be met, with one of the basic items being that the change can't be more offensive or out of character than the previous use. So once you go through that process and look at what is in the Scranton ordinance, it provides that type of change of non-conforming use, subject to meeting the criteria. I believe that the applicant has met his burden of proof to show that that criteria would be met, and therefore would be entitled to the approval of the special exception for the change of non-conforming use.
Sir, I want to show you the deed for this property. Have you had an opportunity to see that before tonight?
Yes, I did.
And can you tell me when that was received or filed?
I believe it was filed on April 4th.
And can you tell me who the current owner of this property is?
The current owner is Diamond 307 LLC, which is William Rinaldi.
Sir, I just have two questions. What is the closest property that abuts the boundary line of this facility? What's the distance to the nearest neighbor, we'll say?
I would have to guess probably the boundary line that I talked about over on Cleveland Street, the area that we won't use for parking. I assume it's less than a hundred feet.
So would you say it's a hundred feet from the, is that, is that a shared driveway? Or is that just a driveway that goes in that facility?
That's just a driveway for that facility.
So how close would you say it's to that driveway?
From the driveway itself?
Yeah.
The properties on Cleveland Street?
That large house that I could see?
The large house coming up?
Yeah.
That is in very close proximity to the driveway coming in, fifty feet, a hundred feet?
So it is close to the facility?
Yes.
Okay. You stated that, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, you stated that there's no real difference between when Geisinger was there and the new facility that wants to go in there?
Essentially, yes.
So would you consider the fact that Geisinger was strictly a day operation and this has overnight stay as a major difference or just a minor difference?
A minor difference due to the fact that it's less intensive, less people going there, and there's a curfew at ten o'clock, so anybody coming in and out of the facility would have to be back at the facility by 10:00 PM.
And earlier on, you explained a little bit about the medical facility and treatment facility. So is there, and we've had so much testimony already, so just bear with me. Is there a difference, in your opinion, between a medical facility and a treatment facility? Because this is coming in as a treatment facility where Geisinger was a medical facility.
I believe the difference is very minor, because when you look at the treatment facility, what are they providing? Medical treatment. It's a different form of medical treatment than that was provided by Geisinger. When you take a look at zoning regulations, they talk about the generic use of a property, medical treatment, Geisinger, doctor treatment, but in the end, the, both of them deal with medical treatment of some type, and the zoning ordinance does not regulate the type of treatment that's provided, only the generic term is, is it a medical?
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
That house that you just talked about that was close to the driveway, is that part of this property?
I believe it is owned by the property owner itself.
It is owned by?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a neighbor, it's not a residential neighbor, as far as I know. I believe the property is vacant, that's the last time I saw it.
Thank you.
Do they have any plans in the future with that property, is become part of this project?
I don't think so, but I, because their application to DTAP would have to be very specific, so if it's where one building, twenty-one thousand square feet facility, it would be limited to what they put on their application.
All right, thank you again.
I represent Oakmont Park Apartments, and when we're looking at the schematic here, directly across from where the building is, you can see that there is, there is an entrance off Route 307, and that is, in fact, the entrance to Oakmont Park, correct?
Correct.
So that there are approximately a hundred and fifty-one and two-bedroom apartments going back from that entrance directly across from this facility.
I assume, if you're telling me that, I don't know.
And was indicated that Geisinger was a clinic that was used during the week, that, so that there was no one there overnight or on weekends?
As far as I know. I don't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of Geisinger when it was in operation, so some of the information I received secondhand, or what I could glean online, glean offline.
Okay, all right. And then you were indicating that the parking that is indicated here was more than sufficient for the normal use of this facility during the week, correct?
Yes.
And if there was a time on the weekends when they could have, in one particular time, as many as sixty visitors, how would that affect the parking situation at that time?
At that particular time, when we talk about the required parking, the zoning ordinance, when it tells you what the minimum required parking is for a treatment facility, I'm sure it takes into all those factors, so it comes up with twenty-seven. We have a lot more than twenty-seven that can be provided, and again, we would operate within the confines of what would be allowed and find additional parking spaces over in this area to accommodate any unusual number of visitors on any given day. But they do control the visiting hours, and they regulate when deliveries are made and things of that sort, so with nobody on the property having a vehicle, it really cuts down in terms of the demand for off-street parking.
Okay. But you do agree that there would be a time that the demand for the off-street parking would be in excess of the twenty-seven spaces that you spoke about?
It could be, yeah.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Mr. Verley, if I may, you're familiar with the application. You indicated, I think you said you were hired by Diamond 307 LLC.
Correct.
Could you tell us when that was?
Back in February, March, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it was, it was not recently, it was about two months ago.
Okay. And at that time, did Diamond LLC own anything?
I didn't check to find out who the ownership was or anything else, I just dealt directly with the Mr. Rinaldi in terms of investigating what zoning regulations would be applicable.
Was he interested in buying the property at the time?
I assume, or he wouldn't have asked me to look at the regulations.
Well, you did help on the application for this special exception, didn't you?
No, I reviewed it when it was completed.
You didn't fill it out?
No, I did not.
You've seen it now, though?
Yes, I have.
And the request is for a special exception, isn't it?
That's correct.
And did you do some research in regard to what the status of the zoning was before you looked at this application or gave an opinion?
You mean prior to 1993?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it doesn't look, the only thing I could tell you is Geisinger received what appears to be a use variance to allow that use to go in in 1986. So unless it shows on that application what it was, I couldn't tell you for certain, but it appears that the city of Scranton, the zoning hearing board, granted a use variance to allow the establishment of the Geisinger Clinic at that location.
All right, and you're familiar with the zoning classification of the entire area on each side of that highway, aren't you?
Yes.
And what is that zoning classification?
R1 and CR.
What is CR?
CR is conservation residential, the R1 is single-family residential.
So you're talking about the lake is CR, right?
That area of the property would be, the property is located in both of those zoning districts. Without getting into the map, because it's very small-scale, I'm assuming that the portion closer to the lake would be of the CR classification, not the lake itself.
But other than the lake, this area, the entire area of East Mountain is residential, isn't that correct?
That's what the zoning shows.
I'm sorry?
That's what the zoning map shows.
Right. So all the people who own homes there are in an R1 zone because it's required to have single-family residences in that area, nothing else?
That's not true. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to submit an application this evening for a change of non-conforming use.
Is there any other use, other than residential homes, allowed in any of that area?
State that again, please.
I said, is there any other use besides residential homes allowed in that, in an R1 zone?
I would have to look at the zoning ordinance to give you a specific answer.
Is a treatment facility allowed in an R1 zone?
It is not, that's why we're requesting the change of non-conforming use.
So without either a variance or a special exception, it cannot be used for whatever is planned for its use, is that correct?
It requires a special exception approval for the change of non-conforming use.
Now, Mr. Verley, you're sort of an expert on zoning, are you familiar with the case of Parazio?
I looked at it briefly, but I don't think it's applicable, because the definition of non-conforming, which was read at the beginning of this hearing, is what we governed our application by, and it's clear, it's clear that the Geisinger facility was non-conforming because it was in existence before the 1993 ordinance was enacted.
Have you seen any document that lists all of the non-conforming uses before the 1993 zoning ordinance?
I didn't request any.
And are you aware that the ordinance says it's required to be listed on a certain list of non-conforming uses?
I'm not aware of that, because we wouldn't be responsible for keeping that list.
And you would agree with me that if this zoning application for Geisinger was applied in 1993, then this could not be used as a non-conforming use, is that correct?
The Geisinger application was 1986.
If it was 1994, this place could not be used for a treatment facility, is that correct?
Again, it's not relevant.
I'd like to just, I had given this to Scanlon, but this happens to be the variance that was filed.
We already reviewed that.
And it, it really doesn't matter, because our ordinance defines it differently.
Now, Mr. Verley, you testified, as I heard your testimony, that the use for the building now planned would be a 24/7 dormitory, is that correct?
No, it would be a 24/7 residential treatment, non-hospital, drug-free residential treatment facility, and the patients would be residing there on a 24-hour basis, depending upon their length of stay being anywhere from possibly twenty-eight days to ninety.
So if a person who's working at Geisinger, a full day would be nine to five, is that correct?
I don't know what their hours were.
Well, I think, remember the zoning board said it was open until the afternoon, regular hours, and not on weekends. Now, if somebody was working nine to five, and they were told that now they have to work 24/7, would that be not a more intensive use for that person?
It would be if you were talking about the same number of doctors that were working at a Geisinger with a pharmacy and the medical practitioners. When you're talking about a facility that has eleven employees and thirty patients, it's a far different, far different crime. It's not a fair comparison.
Well, if a building is open eight hours a day compared to being open 24 hours a day, wouldn't you say there's more intensity to the use of 24 hours?
No, because you have to take a look at what is going on, the activities that are taking place in that building. taking place in that building.
Which just having the lights on for twenty-four hours would be more intense, would it?
I seriously doubt that.
And if there was nobody in the building from the hours of after five o'clock until nine o'clock the next morning, and now you have at least thirty residents plus staff members, there'd be more use in that building than there would be at night for Geisinger?
In the prior testimony, it was stated that there's a ten o'clock curfew, they are transported to any off-site activities, so by saying that it's, it, it would be different, I just don't find the logic in your argument to try to make that comparison.
Now, Mr. Verley, you said you saw this deed, Mr. Scanlon showed you. That deed was, you said, I think you were incorrect, but it was April fifth, two thousand and, and fifteen, uh, nineteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. At that, at the time that this application was filed, was that property owned by Diamond?
I couldn't tell you.
Well, you looked at the deed.
I looked at the application, and I looked at the deed from April fourth, I didn't look at the prior deed.
Well, you know, you, people deed the property to themselves, do they?
Objection.
Do you want to see the prior deed?
I don't know what, what it would make a difference, because I didn't look at the prior deed, so I'm telling you, the deed that I looked at was the one from April fourth, April fifth, and the one that was prior to that, I didn't look at, because I didn't feel there was any need for me to review the deed, that a property owner would not ask me to investigate zoning regulations if he did not have some type of equity or legal standing for the property.
But you're familiar enough with zoning laws to know that an applicant for a zoning application has to sign the application, doesn't he? Or authorize it?
The owner has to sign for certain. That's the, because he's the ultimate entity, because when we talked about a nonconforming use status, that always goes with the owner of the property, regardless who it is. It could be Mr. Rinaldi today, it could be you tomorrow, and you would still have that vested right to use it as a nonconforming use.
Have you ever heard the name Forever Sammy?
Yes.
In what context?
This evening, it was, it was mentioned in terms of him being listed on the application, but I'm not familiar with the organization or app, or the structure of who would be, who that person would be, or entity.
Well, Jan, you've heard the testimony that the applicant whose name is on there is not really the applicant.
Could, that very well could be the case. I was only dealing with the owner of the property, I never dealt with an applicant, because they don't, really don't have any legal standing to submit an application.
And is it a hornback law, that if you're applying for a zoning application, you have to have, you, you have to make the application and be here tonight to support the application?
Mr. Rinaldi is.
Is he for, he's not Forever Sammy?
I'm talking about the ownership of the property, not the possible lease that I heard about earlier this evening.
Okay, but at the time this application was submitted to the zoning board, it was not correct, is that correct?
When it was submitted to the zoning board, it probably was listed as you're stating. What they did at this evening's meeting was to ask the board to proceed with it, noting the fact that there was documentation showing the switch in ownership to Mr. Rinaldi.
Well, you may have been here longer than I did, but I did not hear any amendment to the application being submitted or requested.
I don't know if it was an amendment, but I know there was documentation provided by Mr. Attorney Scanlon to the board and to their solicitor showing, um, certification of some sort. I didn't see the copy of it itself, but I'm sure it was the document that Mr. Rinaldi was the owner of the property and the applicant.
I have no further questions. One more question, was I going to say that? Mr. Verley, you are an expert on zoning, uh, you're qualified as such. Uh, what recommendation, if any, has been made by the Planning Commission of the City of Scranton for this, uh, application?
I'm unaware of any.
Are you aware of the zoning ordinance? It says that any request for a special application has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission?
That's at the discretion of the zoning hearing board.
The word "shall" says it's going to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, isn't that in the zoning ordinance?
I'd have to look at that to see if it's worded in that fashion, I believe it's discretionary.
Is the word "shall" discretionary in your interpretation?
I'd have to review it to see how it reads, to give you a...
If you agree that it says "shall," shouldn't this have gone to the Planning Commission?
Objection. You already stated it doesn't.
Yeah, well, go on, you're, I understand where you're coming from.
Then I have no...
I, I have one more question. Is Mr. Rinaldi the sole owner of that building?
I believe he and his wife.
I'm looking at the document given, and it says, "Received from Rinaldi and Pover, Poveromo," am I saying that right? Who's it?
Okay, thank you.
I say something to the, to the board, as I said in the beginning, uh, none of the neighbors knew about this thing until this weekend, that I know of. Uh, and as, um, Ms. Powell said, the clients, her clients across the street didn't know about it until ten o'clock this morning. Uh, for that reason, we would request, as I indicated in the beginning, the opportunity to present, uh, uh, our evidence at another hearing, since there was really no time to even engage counsel.
Does their not, does their office not qualify, Rick?
I'm sorry?
Does their office not qualify for notice?
What, whose office?
The, the office that you're talking about?
Oakmont.
Of Oakmont. Because I physically posted it in front of their office, and I physically handed it, or I'm sorry, put it on their, their mailbox. So does that office not qualify? Just a minute, please, there's no, no...
We're talking about Oakmont here.
Maybe there's bookmakers of the public that can speak to that.
Everybody will have a chance to speak. Uh, Dan, before we proceed...
Well, are, are you asking for a continuance to the next meeting?
We want to have an opportunity for new hearings to present, uh, any rebuttal testimony, and they would have the same opportunity to rebuttal any testimony we would have.
Um, here, here's my suggestion, is because one nineteen B four A of the ordinance does talk about the Planning Commission getting a, an opportunity to review, uh, a special exception, uh, because Attorney Bishop's claims that they haven't had adequate time to prepare their defense, uh, because the May, the next meeting is May eighth, which is still within the sixty days of the date of the applicant, um, I don't have a problem with granting the continuance.
Dan, is that something that has to be asked?
Uh, that has to be voted on, I'm just, I'm just...
Does, Dan, is that something that has to be asked for, by the applicant, or is it a board motion?
I'm sorry?
That's okay. Is it something that has to be asked for by the applicant, or can the board make that motion?
The board can make that motion, but the applicant has a chance to speak.
And Dan, does, does this need to go to Planning Commission before we take a vote on this?
I think it would be dangerous for us to take a board, a vote without having input from the Planning Commission, uh, because it does say, as Attorney Bishop says, the Planning Commission shall be provided an opportunity to review any proposed special exception use. We haven't given them that opportunity yet.
So if we do continue this, the, will they have time to get this in front of Planning Commission?
I believe, well, Mr. Sweeney said we could get it on the...
The Planning Commission has scheduled it already for their next meeting, which is the twenty-fourth of this month.
So April twenty-fourth, which is in plenty of time for the...
Were both parties aware of that?
I just found that out today.
We just found out that.
Were you aware of that?
Actually, uh, I spoke with, uh, Jack yesterday, and he informed me of the date of the next, uh, planning hearing, uh, with the possibility of, of this occurring. Uh, I didn't know that it was scheduled, but I...
And I didn't know until today either.
As the applicant, are you okay with, uh, continuous hearing next month after you go to the planning board?
Can I have thirty seconds?
Sure, you can.
And Dan, if, if that did happen, would the audience still have a chance to, to talk today, or?
I would prefer that they prepare their objections, that they asked for more time to prepare their objections. So rather than having everybody today and everybody again in May, let's just do it at one time. You, you asked for time to prepare that.
Yeah, but, and does he counsel as well?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Bishop, you're fine. Would no testimony from your side tonight, if, if they agreed to this, and we vote?
I don't know if anyone else from the public would be invited, Mr. Gads, to speak. I know that there's plenty of neighbors that I have.
I can see that.
Some of them I know, and some of them I've heard from.
No, what I'm saying is, is to get, to condense all your testimony to the following meeting, instead of getting partial now and partial later.
Yes, I have nothing, I have no experts, so I didn't talk to anybody.
Okay, so what I'm saying is if, well, let's see what Ms. Scanlon has to say first.
We would have no, no objection at all.
Okay, so if we take a vote right now, it'll end the hearing right now, is what I'm getting at. Or do you want testimony tonight, or wait, have everyone wait and come back the next time, and you have all your testimony in one shot?
The transcript remains open.
I, I would want to know if, if anybody else, if you'd like to call on anyone else to make their own statement, I'm only here as a neighbor.
Okay, well...
If there's somebody that can't make, make the May meeting?
I think so.
Dan, you said it was your recommendation?
It was my recommendation.
To, to, it is to continue it?
Yeah.
Okay. So your client agreed to continue it? Okay, so, then I'll make a motion under continuance.
Let's, let's make sure that we, are we going to have testimony come up from members of the audience?
I mean, Dan, if there's people that cannot make it to this next meeting, do we allow them to speak tonight?
I, I really don't want to hear partial testimony, I'd rather have one shot at this.
Because we're here tonight, and then we're going to hear the same thing on May, May eighth. I'd prefer just doing it one time.
If there's someone here that can't make it on May eighth, we will accept their written testimony, and we'll, we'll dispose of them having to appear in person, and I'll, I'll let that testimony in.
You said written testimony, correct?
Written testimony.
Okay, so, then I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Gadsden?
How are we wording this?
We're going to leave the, leave the transcript open, and we'll take up the rest, the remainder of the testimony on May eighth.
So a vote, yes?
In the, in the interim, they have to go to the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
In the interim, they have to go to the Planning Commission.
Okay. And a vote yes is to continue the hearing?
Is to continue the hearing.
Allowing written testimony for those who can't make it?
Correct.
To be injected. And Ms. Scanlon, you're okay with the written testimony, right?
Correct. Dan, would that be addressed to you?
It should be addressed to the, to Mr. Sweeney.
To Jack.
And just, May eighth is the next date.
For here.
For here.
And April twenty-fourth is the Planning Commission.
Twenty-fourth, and that's here also.
That's here also.
Want to start again, Jack?
Do we have?
We had a motion in a second, I believe.
Mr. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman Walsh?
Yes. A vote of five to zero, it's been continued.
Um, a break would be in order? Does everyone agree?